Hello and welcome to this County Council Town Hall meeting. I'm your host, Susan Kennedy. We're in Potomac, Maryland this evening where residents have gathered with questions for the council members. But before we start with those questions, I'm going to turn to Council President Roger Berliner for some opening remarks. Council President?
Thank you, Susan. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. It is a privilege to be here and we are grateful that you are here. I'm Roger Berliner. I have the honor of serving as the council president for this past year and only about three weeks more to go, my vice president. But it has been a privilege to serve as council president and has been a privilege for the past six years to serve as your district council member. So we do this a fair amount. We go out to a variety of communities so that you can meet the entire council and raise questions to our entire council. Many of us host our own town hall meetings. I've probably had about three or four a year since I've been on the council. But this is going to be an opportunity really for you to hear from my colleagues so that when questions are posed, I will pick a couple of my colleagues typically to answer the questions so that we can go through more questions together. So what I'd like to now do is just allow my colleagues to introduce themselves, starting with Council Member Leventhal.
Good evening. Nice to be here with you. I'm George Leventhal, at-large member of the county council, so I represent Potomac and every other part of the county, chairman of the Health and Human Services Committee, and sit on the Planning, Housing and Economic Development Committee.
Good evening. I'm Phil Andrews. I represent District Three, which includes the Greater Gaithersburg, Rockville area, Flower Valley, Leisure World, Aspen Hill, and a little bit of Potomac. I've been on the council since 1998. I chair the Public Safety Committee and serve on the Education Committee.
Good evening, everyone. Craig Rice, representing the District Two, which includes North Potomac, Montgomery Village, Germantown, Clarksburg, Hyattstown, Damascus, Boyd's, all the way up to the Frederick Line, so a middle swath of Montgomery County up to 270 corridor, and including our fantastic agricultural reserve.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Navarro. I'm the vice president of the council. I also represent District Four, which includes Wheaton, Colesville, parts of Aspen Hill, Glenmont, Sandy Spring, Olive Olney, and parts of Latinsville. I also am the chair of the Fiscal Policy Committee, Government Operations and Fiscal Policy Committee, and I'm a member of the HHS Committee as well. And it's a pleasure to be here with you tonight.
And let me add that my district, District One, has recently been changed, and so I now represent from the DC-Montgomery County line all the way to the Frederick-Montgomery County line. From Bethesda, Chevy Chase, Potomac, Kensington, and Poolsville are now in my wonderful district. And I also have the privilege of serving as chairman of the Transportation, Infrastructure, Energy and Environment Committee, and serve under Phil Andrews' leadership on the Public Safety Committee.
Thanks for coming out tonight, everyone. I am Nancy Florine, one of the four at-large members of the council. I've been on the council since 2002. I chair the Planning, Housing and Economic Development Committee and sit with Roger on the Transportation, Infrastructure, Energy and Environment Committee. And I really want to thank you all for being here, given that last night kept many of us up very late. I'm sure many of you were busy as well, and it's great to have you out again tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hans Reimer, and I'm one of the four at-large council members as well. Serve on the Transportation, Energy, Infrastructure, Environment Committee, which I enjoy very much. It addresses issues that I'm very passionate about, about transportation and how to increase mobility in the county, environmental sustainability. I also serve on the Government Operations Fiscal Policy Committee. We deal with a lot of employee compensation issues and technology issues. I serve as the council's lead for digital government, and I'm working very hard on how we can improve our accessibility through digital strategy to you, the residents. And enjoy very much being on the council. I live near Montgomery College in Tacoma Park, and I've got two young boys and look forward to our discussion tonight.
I'm Mark. Excuse me. I'm Mark Elrich. I'm one of the four at-large council members. I also live in Tacoma Park. I serve on the Planning, Housing and Economic Development Committee, and I serve on the Public Safety Committee.
Susan, I think that puts it back in your ball.
Yes, it does. And we have a woman here who's going to start us off with a very important question.
Hi, my name is Pam Yerg. I live here in Montgomery County, and I have kind of two-part question. As everyone is planning budgets, and it is a very difficult thing to plan, I'm wondering what influence and what plans are surrounding the maintenance of effort law. Secondly, I'm wondering the unfunded mandates in our schools for the corollary sports programs for children, for students with disabilities, if the county council has any intention of helping to support some of that funding. Thank you.
Why don't I turn to the vice president of the council, a former school board member, to take the first part of your question, Ms. Berliner?
Sure. In terms of maintenance of effort, as everybody knows, the legislature did make some changes to that particular law, which I think was important in terms of what other counties needed to do, which was to really step up and fulfill their commitment to education funding. Montgomery County, of course, in the past 10 years has gone above and beyond maintenance of effort for about $600 million. And so we are not one of those counties that don't have a track record of stepping up to education. Now, of course, given the very difficult economic times, as we adopted a fiscal plan in our council did, one of the things we noticed is that if we continue on that path, obviously it was quite unsustainable. So everybody has had to sort of reanalyze how we are going to distribute our resources adequately. One concern that I know has been expressed by many of us on the council is that this new law, because, for example, if you don't meet maintenance of effort and you're not approved to receive a waiver, the state can intercept your income tax receipts, and that obviously has an extraordinary negative impact on other resources for other agencies. So in reality, it's as if we now have a ceiling versus what used to be the floor. So there are going to be a lot of conversations in terms of how can we move forward fulfilling the needs of our education system, which is one of the best in the country? And, you know, how can we then make decisions to go above and beyond maintenance of effort since now we have this very, very stringent, in my opinion, not very flexible new law? So these will be conversations going forward. Things are getting a little bit better, obviously. We don't foresee not being able to meet maintenance of effort. The real question is going to be if the school system comes back to us and asks us to go above and beyond, and then we'll have to have serious conversations, because any time you go above that, you're going below for other things like public safety or recreation or health and human services or libraries. So we'll see.
Mr. Andrews?
Thank you. Well, the maintenance of effort law is really a misnamed law because it doesn't have anything necessarily to do with effort. It's a maintenance of funding law, which may or may not be connected to the amount of effort in the classroom in terms of class size. So it's a fundamentally problematic law. As was noted, Montgomery County has gone way and above in the past decade. We were $600 million roughly above that amount, and as you go above it, you get ratcheted up, and you can never, in effect, go down unless you get a waiver, which is extremely difficult. And so it is something that will drive the budget in the coming years. If we fund the schools at maintenance of effort, which I certainly expect we would do next spring, then according to our fiscal plans, county government departments and park and planning would have to take a 5% cut, and that doesn't assume any pay increases to start with. And so you can see the pressure that we will be facing, given that maintenance of effort requirement that the state unwisely changed in the past session. We also have the problem now of the state shifting half of the cost of pensions to the counties. But we don't set the pension formula, the basic pension formula, and we don't invest the money, and we don't set the salaries for the school system. So that's a problem as well. We will do our best, as always, to balance the needs. The school system understandably asks for whatever it thinks it needs and is usually fairly uninhibited because they do not have to raise the revenue for it. We have to raise revenues, and we have to balance the needs of the different services, public safety, our police services, our fire services, our libraries, and parks, and so on. So our job is a different one the school system has.
Good evening. My name is Ted Farber. I live on Falls Bridge Lane here in Potomac, concerned about the massive increase of deer population in our neighborhoods, creating defoliation of our gardens, causing some homeowners to put up fences, which is hardly what we want to do to create neighborliness. There's disease that's created by the ticks that they carry, and I myself have had two encounters with my car with deer. So I wonder what steps the county council is taking to manage this massive increase in this part of the county.
Good question.
Thank you for raising that question. As your district council member, I'll start this conversation. I am keenly aware, I had a close encounter with a deer as well. I used to live off -- can you hear me all right? I apologize. Comes and goes.
That's probably a good idea.
Does that work better?
Yes.
It does? Really? Okay. So as your district council member, I'm keenly aware of the deer issue. I used to live right off MacArthur Boulevard and the CNO Canal, and I had a close encounter with a deer myself. I want you to know that we have steadily increased funding for deer management in our county over the county executive's budget requests. I've recently written to our wonderful United States senators and our congressmen because we have a deer problem in the CNO Canal Park, and our park's system has not done anything about it. And they just wrote me back after I had asked them to look into this, and they said, "We can't afford to do an environmental impact statement that would allow us to change how we manage the herds in our park." So I've asked our senators and congressmen to see if they could find the budget necessary to help our park service do that. And there's also a state bill that our council has now supported, which would allow for deer hunting, bows and arrows closer to homes than currently is allowed. The current law prohibits it from 150 yards. With permission of a landowner, you could do it within 50 yards of a home. So we feel that's a safe way, and we're trying. We get it. Mr. Rice, did you want to add to that?
I think that's great. We actually have a huge challenge in the Up County as well, and it especially affects a lot of our farming population. Seneca Creek State Park, which is also located right in between Germantown and Gaithersburg, is experiencing the same challenge. And so my residents there have expressed the same concern. We've worked in conjunction. Delegate Eric Lutke is the one who's sponsoring that bill in the House. I'm the Menco representative and looking forward to working with them on a number of different instances and working with your district council member, Council Member Berliner, and of course, the rest of the council, to make sure we're trying to address that as quickly as possible, because it certainly has become a major problem for us.
Hi, my name is Susan Lee. I'm a Glen Hills resident, and I'm also on the Citizens Advisory Committee for the Glen Hills sewer study. And I'm here tonight to ask you folks for your advice on how we can appeal the determinations that now 242 of us in the neighborhood have been determined that our lots are not sustainable on septic. There were 542 lots that were studied in the study. Only nine were found to have septic failures. I was not one of them. I'm one of the 242. None of us had given any notice on this. I have never had a failed septic. I'm on three acres. I have plenty of room for reserve lots. And now they've taken the 242, they've put it up on the very public website. They've told, we've asked Mr. Hoyt two weeks ago, over two weeks ago, to at least notify all 242 of us, tell us what the basis was. They never went out, did any inspections. This is all based on just sort of theoretical research parameters. They didn't go out to any of the 572 sites. They have no specific evidence of any particular sites except the nine that were failed. They haven't even gone out to those. So now we're faced with a situation where today, I got it just very timely, this afternoon I pulled out of my mailbox a letter from a real estate agent who's looking for a house in Glen Hills. She's got a family. She wants them to live in Glen Hills. I have a house where I have never had a problem. I have a tile system that's totally approved by the county, but yet I have no idea what the basis was for the determination. I have no idea how to appeal it, how to get it off the website. When this real estate agent comes calling at my door, what do I tell her? Am I allowed to sell my house now that I don't have, that I'm not hooked up? What if she wants to renovate? What if they want to rebuild? What are our appeal rights?
Well, one, thank you for bringing this to our attention, and I do chair the committee. This is news to, I think, all of us with respect to this, so let us take it in.
We did send you a copy. The copy of the letter that went to Mr. Hoyt went to all of the council members, including Mr. Levchenko, who handles these situations. And tonight, I've got a copy of my letter as well here. And so I hope you've already read the copies.
We do have the letter right in our laps, most of us. Let me turn first to Council Member Florine, because she really was the champion of making sure that this issue was looked at, because it hadn't been looked at for so long, and people were struggling in that community. And so she led the way in trying to make sure that we actually did look at it. So, Ms. Florine?
Yes. Ms. Lee, I did see this study, this, your letter, when it came in. I don't know if you've heard back from Mr. Hoyt. We'll, of course, check in with him tomorrow and see what the story is. As you know, there's an issue with the Glen Hills sewer situation, or septic situation. I think it was in the master plan that it called for the study, and as, I think, you're the expert, actually, on this sort of thing. It's been an issue for many, many years. We finally got them to fund the study and to look at the whole situation. It's very interesting now, the state's coming up with new rules about how we address septics and sewers and all that sort of thing, and I'm hopeful that that will be addressed in the context of this analysis. But in any event, you should certainly have an opportunity to engage on this point. And so we'll do what we can to get this issue resolved as soon as we can.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes. And Ms. Lee, your letter is very thorough and clear, and we spoke about it a couple weeks ago after you sent it to me as your council member. I think that the key is to, and I'll be happy to send a follow-up to Mr. Hoyt to ask him what his response is. He is the key person to write, and you may also wish to write the county executive, since Mr. Hoyt works for the county executive. But you certainly deserve an answer to your letter. It's very clear, and I'll work with you to work to get an answer from Mr. Hoyt.
Hi, I'm David Epstein. I live on Oakland Terrace, off of Oakland Drive in Potomac, and at least three of you are aware of the problem that we've had with the Potomac Swim and Tennis Club. We went before the planning board and the appeals board, and the neighbors won in both cases. And then the attorney for the pool managed to get a circuit court judge to overrule the planning board and direct construction of the tennis bubble without even going back to the planning board, and we've really been screwed. We've brought more traffic into the community, a terrible eyesore, and it seems nothing is happening, and we're just sort of left, we've been thrown to the walls. So besides wondering what's going on, I'd also be wondering what steps you've taken to make sure that this can't happen again in Montgomery County.
Well, my office has spent a lot of time with you, David, on this, and there was a failure to notify neighbors timely, and the Swim and Tennis Club went to court, and they prevailed, and it is unsightly. I've toured the site with you, and it is a sad example of where government was not able to address the neighbors' concerns. My office has spent a lot of time on it after the fact. It's not anything my office is responsible for. We've forwarded your concerns about parking to the police and asked them for enforcement. We've forwarded your concerns about construction noise and the unsightliness of the construction site to DPS. DPS frequently inspects the site, so, you know, I think you're familiar with the efforts my office has made. I know that you're not delighted with the outcome of the agency's efforts on your behalf, but we'll continue to work with you as best we can. It's an allowed use, and it's a permitted use, and I understand the neighbors are unhappy about it, and I'll continue to try to work with you to relay the concerns as they arise.
Hi, my name is Sophia Marvell. I'm from Potomac, Maryland. Just want to thank you for coming into our community this evening. I just wanted to say, the letter that was drafted by County Council Member President Berliner's office today that opens up urging the school board to open up the process pertaining to the Brickyard Road school site, put it back on the table, and also identifying alternate sites for soccer fields in other parts of the county where they're actually needed, is a great first step to opening up communication with the school board, including the county, and having public representatives and input into this issue. Our question is, what are the next steps moving forward to include the council as a whole and to include the public to consider other alternatives for this site, such as the Brickyard Educational Farm? Thank you.
Well, thank you, and thank you for your leadership, and thank you just for the way in which you conduct yourself. It does matter. Let me just share a few thoughts, and then I'll turn it over to my colleagues if they care to amplify. I think all of us up here found the process by which this all unfolded to be not okay. Okay? It wasn't okay for our county. It wasn't okay for the Board of Education. It simply was not okay. And it was in fact so not okay that we drafted legislation that said, "In the future, this cannot happen this way," and that the council will actually have a role in the future. We did not have any authority in this matter as the way it was played out. And so we said, "That's not going to happen again in the future." But that doesn't take care of this situation. So what five of us on the council today have basically said is, you know, there are four, at least four legitimate, valid, public interests at stake here. There is the desire of a community to make sure that it is, has input before public property is disposed of that affects their neighborhood. It is a legitimate need for more soccer fields in the Down County. It's documented. There's no question about that. There is a legitimate desire to have greater understanding and commitment to organic farming and healthy eating and educating our children about that. So all of these things are true, and the school system has a legitimate desire and need to be able to reclaim its property if it ever needs it. All of those are true, and it feels like in this moment, we're in a circle firing at each other, as though that these interests have to be pitted against one another. And so my colleagues and I have just said, "It doesn't have to be that way. Can't we just try and find a win-win solution here instead of a win-lose solution?" And we may not be able to. I don't want to suggest that it's going to be so easy, but I don't think we've really tried. I think everybody's dug in, and now the courts have put a stay in place. And that means no one knows what the outcome of this debate's going to be and who wins and who loses. So everybody, this is, I'm a lawyer. When there's a stay, it's a perfect time to have what are called settlement discussions. So using that background, I basically said, and my colleagues joined with me, and we said to the county executive and to the school system, "Isn't this a time to step back and see if we can do this differently? If we can, find a way to advance all of these legitimate interests without pitting people against each other and without having ugly litigation and an ugly mess?" So that was the motivation, and I think it's widely shared. I'll turn to anybody else.
I wanted to thank Roger for writing the letter today, because I think it's important. I think everybody understands this risk primarily with the school board right now, because we were not able to pass legislation, as Roger said, in time to put the county council into the loop of approving uses of these facilities. I do think that as a principle, and I've read the proposal that's come about from the Brickyard Farm Group, that, you know, this is no longer an issue of a private farm versus soccer fields. And I think, you know, what's happened is you've articulated the use that is pretty much dovetails with educational goals. And, you know, we have this interest in the school system and community gardens. We've got an interest that we've expressed in terms of providing facilities for new farmers to engage in agricultural activities in the county. You have a unique resource. People say, "Well, it could go here, it could go there." Actually, organic land in the county is not something you can find here or there. You can pretty much find it here. So I'm hoping, as Roger's expressed, that people will step back from what are very hardened positions. And, you know, I've had conversations with school board people, and I was struck by the unwillingness to discuss the merits of the issue and just simply to feel like they resent the fact that people are pushing on them to do something different. And I think everybody's got to step back from this and look at what's been proposed. And, you know, I think Roger puts it pretty well. You've got options, and it would behoove the school system to examine the options. And so I signed on the letter, and I hope that we can persuade, you know, the other parties to just step back and say what really is the best decision rather than feeling obligated to defend the previous decision.
Mr. Leventhal?
Well, I've been on the county council for 10 years, and more and more, it strikes me that governments sometimes lose sight of the fact that government doesn't exist for the sake of government. The only reason we have a government is to serve people. And so I think that we are, unfortunately, some of the institutions here in the county are looking out to defend their own prerogatives in this case rather than addressing what is in people's best interest. And, you know, I respect our school system. I have two kids in our school system. We have an outstanding school system. But I know that their concern is that they want to be able to maintain control of their assets, and they do not want to find themselves in a situation where neighbors are able to claim control over school system assets. I think that's the wrong approach. That's why I was the sponsor of Bill 1112 that makes sure that when public assets, which belong to all of us, are disposed of, that there is a public process by which they are disposed of. That was not only in response to Brickyard, although it was partially in response to Brickyard. There were a number of other cases where we found that major public assets belonging to all of us were being disposed of without the legislative branch and without the public having an opportunity to have any say-so over it. So I feel strongly about that. On the Brickyard matter, I agree with what my friend Mark Elrich said, that the availability of organic land, farmland that's available for that purpose is very scarce and that that's a precious asset. And as I've weighed this issue, I think that that is a higher priority than soccer fields in that location.
Let me just, let me just conclude this piece by saying I did speak directly with the county executive today to alert him to the letter. It's been suggested that this is really in the school board's lap at this point in time. It isn't clear to me that that's actually legally the case, because they do have a binding contract with the county, and I really feel like actually the person that has to step back is our county executive, and he has to, with the school system, engage and be willing to step back as well and engage the entire community. So that's why it was directed to the two of them, and my hope is, and with your help. I mean, really, everybody's dug in here, okay? And so everybody has to loosen up and make it, if you will, safer for people to do something that they feel very strongly about, okay? And so I just urge you to consider that as well as to how you can help create an environment in which it's safe for people to let go of that which they have held onto so tightly.
Okay. We are about halfway through with our show right now, so it's time to take a break. But don't go away. We'll be right back with more of our town meeting for Potomac. But don't go away, we'll be right back with more of our town meeting for Potomac.
But there's only one number you need to remember for non-emergency calls, 311. MC311 is Montgomery County Government's online telephone information system. Need information? Have a problem or complaint? Trying to locate a county government facility? Call 311. The call center is open Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The website is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
Welcome back to our town hall meeting in Potomac, Maryland, and we're going straight back to the floor with questions.
Thank you. I'm Milt Meneman, Potomac Preserve, I think most of you know me. For the last several years, there's been a lot of noise about restricting soliciting on our county and state roads. You know that last year, a bill was passed that provides for issuing permits and precluding people from doing solicitation unless they get such a permit from the county. I have not heard that the county appropriate committee has given any thought about this, although it seemed to me that Phil Andrews has been involved with it for some time with you and me. So, what's the council interest in this? Anything? Nothing?
Yeah. Let me turn to Mr. Andrews and Mr. Rice with respect to this. Oh, Mr. Leventhal, I apologize.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the question, Milt. The law that was passed by the General Assembly that authorizes the county to establish a permitting system for roadside solicitation has a poison pill in it, as far as I'm concerned, because it would require us, if we established a permitting system, to allow the solicitors to go into the street to solicit, which is giving people a license to jaywalk. I'm one of those on the council who thinks we should prohibit, be able to prohibit, we don't have the authority unfortunately, but I believe we should have the authority from the state to prohibit roadside solicitation because it's inherently dangerous to have people soliciting in roadways. It's distracting the drivers, it's unsafe for them, and people have come very close to getting seriously hurt, and in other places, people have been killed. Two firefighters were killed in California, or not killed, but were injured in California and Texas doing roadside solicitation. So, it is important to address as a public safety issue. We have a lot of efforts in the county aimed at pedestrian and traffic safety, and this is a big gaping loophole in the law, but we have not been able to persuade our own delegation to give us this authority. Instead, they have gone the permitting route, but they attached this provision in it which requires us if we, again, it requires us if we establish a permitting system, to let people go into the street to solicit, which is a nonstarter. So, that's why you haven't seen any activity on it. I would urge everyone who cares about this issue to talk to their state legislators and tell them they want to give the county, you want them to give the county the authority to prohibit.
I'd just like to say, I, there is nothing that Phil has said with which I disagree. I think we have a somewhat different emphasis, and I'm very glad to be able to say this on television. If you would prefer that panhandlers not solicit in public, do not give money to panhandlers. If you wish to support people in need, there are organizations like the Montgomery County Coalition for the Homeless, MCH.net, Bethesda Cares, BethesdaCares.org. I'm chairman of the Health and Human Services Committee. I've made a special policy priority of serving the needs of the homeless in particular. And I can tell you that when you see an individual with a cardboard sign saying, "I need kidney dialysis," $1.75 out of your pocket will not get kidney dialysis for that individual. And in most cases, to the extent that this is a population that can be studied, studies have shown that the spare change that panhandlers collect is mostly used, in large part, to feed their own personal habits, and that those habits are, you know, something that most of us would want to struggle to control. I mean, you have a large population of substance abusers, you have a large population of people who are having difficulty securing a job. If you want to support people in need, the best way to do that, as I say, is through nonprofit service providers, of which there are many. If individuals did not give money to panhandlers, panhandling would dry up. And so, the challenge that I'm seeking to promote is how to educate the public about how to support organizations like MCH, like Bethesda Cares, that provide support to people in need, and stop giving spare change to panhandlers.
Let me just add one thing, and that is that many of these charities that are soliciting in the street are excellent charities. It just needs to be done in a way that's safe and not in the middle of the road.
And I would also like to add that the organizations that I've mentioned that work with the homeless, MCH, and Shepherd's Table, and Bethesda Cares, agree with me on this, that giving spare change to panhandlers is not often, usually, in the best interest of those individuals, and they discourage it.
All right. Seth Miller from Potomac. First off, Susan, thank you for moderating this. President and council members, thank you for this and your service. Susan, as we discussed, it's a two-part question. With us being in, you know, the midst of a really bad recession, and with the state putting teacher pensions on the county, and, you know, with us hearing about Ike Leggett having a four-man security detail when, to my knowledge, no county executive has ever been harmed personally, what steps is the council going to take to cut spending so as to mitigate the need for raising revenue with additional taxes and speeding red light cameras?
I'm going to turn to Mr. Reimer. Everybody's so anxious to answer this question. And our GO committee chair, who actually has the fiscal policy sets of issues as well.
Well, first of all, I trust that the decision about the county executive's security detail is one that is made by people who are public safety professionals, and I don't want to second-guess it. I know that sometimes people criticize that, but I think that it's made in the interest of public safety. I came onto the council in 2010, and this was, I guess, a year or two after the bubble collapsed. We had a real estate bubble, a financial industry bubble that produced surging tax revenues in the county and in the state, and then the bottom fell out. And we were left with promises that could not be sustained. 25% shortfalls in our revenue. Normally, in government, large organizations, 2% or 3% is a very significant discrepancy between your spending and your revenue. We were down 20%, 25%. So, the county council in 2010 and in 2009 earlier began to reduce spending significantly. Last year's budget, and the year before that I participated in, we reduced spending very, very significantly. We had a balanced package with some revenues, very modest on the revenue side, very, very significant spending reductions, hundreds of millions of dollars each year that we reduced in real dollars, money that's not getting spent now in the libraries, public safety, transportation, schools. And we've tried as much as possible to implement those reductions in ways that will do the least harm. And that has been the job. That's been the job certainly that I signed up for, was to help us, you know, figure out how to reduce our spending trajectory. We have done a great deal in that regard, but we're not done. And even after, you know, changes in employee compensation, on pay freezes for three years in a row, that's, that's tough, three years in a row. Actually, not a lot of large private sector companies have had to make their employees have a complete pay freeze for three years in a row. Certainly, it's much more restricted than the federal government. Changes in health benefits, changes in retirement benefits. We've made all of these changes, but we're still not all the way through. And so, this coming year, you know, we're going to make maintenance of effort on education. We've got a 5% deficit nevertheless in our county agencies. So, we're still looking for ways to reduce spending, and, you know, we're going to have to continue to do that for a number of years. But we are doing it, and I think we're doing it very effectively.
Let me have our fiscal committee chair also speak to this issue for you.
Yeah, just wanted to follow up on that comment. You know, it's very interesting to note that, sitting up here, you have all, well, eight of us right now, but, you know, they're all Democrats. And we faced this extraordinary challenge, I think, head-on. In the past three years, I mean, one of the most important things that we did was to adopt this fiscal plan, and at that time, Councilwoman Florine was president. This was really important because it was truly just a blueprint of figuring out, how can we best position the county to be fiscally stable going forward? And we had to do everything from, number one, we rebased the school system with the maintenance of effort law that was really, really important. We took on employee compensation, we took on, you know, pensions, things of that sort in terms of increasing the contribution that our employees had to make. As I was mentioning, no races. We finally were able to give a bonus that didn't go into the base. We really took a look at every single aspect that we could control to put in structural changes, not one-time changes, structural, so that when we looked in the long term, we realized that Montgomery County is definitely stable and it is sustainable. The other thing we did was to set a goal for our reserves, and that was really critical because our rating agencies were already saying to us, you know, "It's not just enough to make some of these cuts. What are you doing to shore up your reserves?" So, we've done all of these things, and I think that the one thing that you can walk away and say is that here's Montgomery County, very close to the federal government, of course, as we all have heard. We did maintain our AAA bond rating this year, and that's just, you know, one of 33 counties nationally that was able to retain that. That says, I think, a lot. So, we've been very busy in this last three years, and I think what you can walk away with, again, is the notion that we have looked at everything, from small things like consolidation of certain departments and certain services, all the way to big things like rebasing when it came to the maintenance of effort law. So, we've been very busy, and you can rest assured that we will continue to take a look and we will continue to redefine and consolidate.
All right. As I told you, this is a two-part question. Montgomery County was hit.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Can I, is this working? Yeah. My, my comment about speed cameras and red light cameras is somewhat similar to my comment regarding panhandling. If you do not want to get a ticket from a speed camera, then let me tell you that under state law, you only get a speed camera ticket if you are traveling 12 miles an hour above the posted speed limit. If you do not want to get a red light ticket, do not run red lights. What we have found is, is that collisions and fatalities have decreased substantially since the implementation of speed camera machines. And what we have found also is that the number of complaints we get about speeding on neighborhood streets vastly exceeds the complaints we get from people who are annoyed about the tickets. Now, I don't think that answer will be persuasive to people who are annoyed about the tickets. I get complaints from constituents out of their minds about these speed cameras, but I will tell you, the purpose of speed cameras is to keep all of you safe. It is not to raise revenue.
Councilman, you were sued in a class action lawsuit that went to the Court of Appeals of the state, saying because the enabling legislation passed by the state legislature says that the contractor running the speed cameras can't be compensated in part based on the number of tickets issued. The, the Court of Appeals said that was an issue for the district court. Montgomery County went and changed the contract of the operator of the speed cameras to say that they shall not be construed as the operator. That's not within the spirit of the state law. I mean, that's not right. You guys are saying, are paying them based on the number of tickets when state law says you can't, and you made a change to the nomenclature or semantics of a contract to make it so that you weren't doing that. That's not the conduct we expect of our elected officials.
Actually, let me take that as chair of the Public Safety Committee. Our police department has done a terrific job in running this program, and they've been very responsive to where their complaints are about speeding, and the police department is the issuer of the tickets. Each ticket that's sent out is reviewed by an employee of the police department to assure that the police agree that it is a violation. So, the, the company that installs the cameras does not send out the tickets, and that is the key to ensuring that that's not occurring.
Okay. Right up here, this lady here who's been waiting so patiently, and I know a lot of you folks have your hands up, we're going to try to get around.
Okay. Well, I'm Patricia Tyson, I live in, on Streamview Court, which is on the very eastern edge of Potomac, behind the Tally Ho Swim Club, and a long way from Brickyard Road. I'm not a neighbor. I have a very simple question. If none of you can answer it, then I would like to be able to answer it. Do you know the di-
Is this a pop quiz?
Do you know the difference between genetically modified seed and organic heritage seed?
I think we know there is a difference.
Good.
Huh? Does that, do I get half credit from my team? But go ahead.
Well, the point I want to make is that the real importance of Nick's farm is that he rages, he raises heritage seed. To do that, he cannot just move up to the agricultural reserve and be next to Monsanto genetically modified corn and soybeans and whatever else. He has to be surrounded by a buffer of several miles. So, it's more than just saving it because it's organic soil. It's because he produces seed that is important for future generations because it maintains genetic diversity. He distributes that seed to other farmers throughout the country. It's a really important contribution to this nation at a time when we're so concerned about preserving food without genetic, without salmon genes and stirred into our vegetables.
Thank you.
I would say some of us learned something tonight. Okay, sir.
My name is Byron Block, and for over 40 years, I've been an auto safety and traffic safety expert in the United States. Now, would the council consider two proposals? One is to require all new striping of the roads, use reflective paint, which is both more durable and longer lasting, so you'll save money in not having to repaint the stripes again and again. And as our population ages, we need to improve the visibility at night and in rainy nights especially, of the road striping on these roads. So, would you entertain requiring the all-new striping be reflective striping as a public safety and transportation safety measure? The second part is, with the roads that we approved to be built, there are no warranties that would ensure that these roads would last for 15 or more years, as they do if they met standards such as in Sweden and in Germany, where some of their roads are guaranteed to last for 50 years. So, if you talk about saving money, millions of dollars is needlessly wasted incessantly repaving poorly-done roads throughout our county. It's kind of like a game. They build, they pave a road, and sure enough, three or four years later, it has to be paved again, and the cost is eating us up. So, you'd save money, we'd have better roads, less potholes, et cetera. So, would you entertain that proposal, requiring a guarantee of the roads so that they're built to last longer and be safer?
Well, as chair of the Transportation Committee, I thank you for raising those I too am a big fan of reflective striping. I too, I mean, particularly in the communities in which you live, driving at night, it is very dark, and it's, those reflective striping make a huge difference. Now, I don't know what the cost is. So, what I can promise you is that our committee will ask our Department of Transportation to come and share their thoughts with us with respect to that, and then we'll, we'll go from there. Secondly, I totally get that we waste money because, on repaving our roads, and quite frankly, we are so far behind in repaving our roads, it is a source of great embarrassment to all of us. Our council has consistently added money for repaving because we feel like it is one of our fundamental obligations to you, is to make sure that our streets are in good order and that they don't have huge potholes, and that your, the value of your residential properties are not degraded by virtue of having terrible roads. And I hear often that lament of, "They, they crumble in a matter of years," that there is cracks in them in less than a year. And so, I will inquire as to what warranties are provided and what other communities get in terms of warranties, because we should be having best practices here in Montgomery County.
Hi, good evening. My name is-
My name is Beth Kennington. I'm a resident of Gaithersburg, Maryland. I'm very involved in education here in Montgomery County Public Schools, and I'm surrounded by some other major education advocates. I want to share with you this evening a concern we have about pedestrian safety in our county. I think we've got some serious issues we really need to take a look at. When we started talking about red light tickets and speed tickets long ago, we talked about earmarking that money for pedestrian safety initiatives. We haven't seen much of that pedestrian safety initiative being implemented within our county. We've seen students hit by cars. We've seen students rushing to get to school across Great Seneca Highway. We've lost a student at Northwest High School. A short time ago, we lost a young lady, Christina Morris Ward, at Seneca Valley High School. Again, Monday, we lost another 37-year-old resident along Muddy Branch Highway. I think the time has come for us to really put our money where our mouths are, take a look at those initiatives, see what rapid flashing beacons we can put at risky intersections, see what countdown changes we can make with the stoplights for the pedestrians, and see what else we can do to try to improve safety for our pedestrians.
Thank you for raising this. This is a topic that our joint committees just recently took up. I'll make sure that Mr. Rice, Mr. Reamer, and Ms. Florine, and anybody else that wants to jump in, because this is something we do take very seriously. Mr. Rice?
Yeah, well, thank you very much, Beth, for your advocacy, first of all, on behalf of many of the students throughout the Montgomery County area. Let me just tell you this, that we actually have a committee, I was meeting with our county executive earlier today, this afternoon, finalizing the formulation of a meeting that's going to take place on November 19th, between the Montgomery County School System, Department of Transportation, myself, as well as a number of other stakeholders, to talk about pedestrian safety, especially associated with our school system. We've received a number of concerns, not only from areas in which we have heavily traffic areas, but also in some of our newer developments, in the Clarksville area, to where we have new developments that are there and aren't really sure about where the proper crosswalks are, what the right kinds of newer technology are going to be. So this is something, you're right, that in looking at now the new redevelopments in many of our older neighborhoods, as they're changing, and we're having kids that are now moving into neighborhoods that typically didn't have children before, it's going to be really important for us to reevaluate that. So I'm looking forward to working with my other council members here. I know that's something that we all carry very much about. It was very sad to have those incidents happen so closely together, but one of them, like our county executive said, is one too many. And so we remain committed to make sure that we're going to do something. So like I said, it's going to start with, it started with, a few weeks ago, that update that some of my colleagues received, and we'll continue with that meeting on November 19th.
Mr. Reamer?
Thank you for the question and for your advocacy on this issue. As a parent of two kids who live about six blocks from the elementary school where they'll go, I know they'll be walking to school, I'll be worried about their safety. On the positive side, and as a kid who walked a mile each way uphill when I was young going to school, in the snow, I was in California, actually, but it wasn't a mile. My best memories of youth are walking to and from school, no question about it. On the positive side, the county, over the last several years, has implemented a very successful pedestrian safety program that looks at what we call high-incidence areas. And they looked at data of where all the pedestrian collisions were throughout the county, and they found that there were a number of intersections in roads and segments of roads where there were repeated problems. And so the county went into those specific areas and implemented solutions. In some places, there are different kinds of sidewalks, or signage, or crossings, or fences to stop people from crossing where they have a better option to cross nearby. And it has reduced the number of collisions by about a third, so it's been successful in saving lives. But at the same time, you know, we have a lot more to do. And I think particularly in the safe routes to school area, we've hit a budget problem where we have a schedule to work our way through the schools to assess whether we have a safer route to school for each of the schools and what changes we could make. But the money hasn't been there to plow through all those schools as rapidly as we'd like to. So I would certainly like to see if we can do that more quickly. I would be interested to explore whether residents would support lower speed limits within a certain radius of schools. That's always controversial, but the fact is, the faster your car is going, the more likely the pedestrian that you hit is going to die. So, you know, yeah, well, we'll talk about it later, but there is more that we need to do, and I think a lot of us want to look at that.
Let me add one thing, and that is that this is the most dangerous time of the year for pedestrians because of the change in daylight savings time. So we have the most pedestrian collisions, collisions of vehicles and pedestrians, in November, December, on average each year. And so it is incumbent upon each of us to be very careful when we're driving, and to get that message out to other drivers, and for pedestrians as well, and when we are pedestrians, to wear bright clothing and to be following all of the traffic safety rules.
Peggy Dennis from Potomac, and I'd like to end on a much lighter and more fun note, inviting all of our council members and everyone here to come out, support, and enjoy Potomac Theater Company's production of My Fair Lady on both weekends, either side of Thanksgiving. Come and enjoy it, I'll be in it, so you can all go meh at me. And I'd also like to say-
Are you allowed to do little?
The Civic Federation is in the process of organizing a program, we hope for December 5th, on playing fields, the need for them, who controls them, whether they're being properly maintained, and whether they're being as effectively used as they should be. So I hope you'll both come to both shows.
Ms. Florine?
Thanks, Peggy. I'm sure we will make every effort to go watch you in the show. But actually, tomorrow, we're getting briefed by the Park and Planning Commission on the Parks and Recreation Open Space Plan. And that addresses a lot of the things that the Civic Fed will be interested in. The plan was issued in July, I believe, but we hadn't seen it before. So it has, I took a look at it today, and it has a variety of recommendations for our urban parks, and the need for ball fields, certainly an issue for the Brickyard Road community, and how they figure that out. So there's a lot to be said, there's a lot of history to this, and there's a lot of analysis that goes into all of that. So I want actually everyone to know that the Parks Department has a way at how it looks at the recreational needs for each part of the county, and it sets some standards for how that's evaluated. So that may be a tool that you may want to take a look at as you consider the Brickyard Road situation, as well as all the community needs that are out there.
Okay, great. That's going to be the note that we end on this evening, so I'm going to turn it over to Council President Roger Berliner for some closing remarks.
And they will be very brief. Thank you all, really, for engaging with us, for your good questions, and for your good spirit, and may it continue for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
What do traffic cams, elected officials, and park openings have in common? County Cable Montgomery. CCM is the place for local news and information, 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. From live council hearings and county executive press conferences, to in-depth profiles of government programs and services, to shows about Maryland history, parks and recreation, and entertainment. CCM covers Montgomery County, all 500 miles and 1 million people.
We're here to wrap up the news of the Montgomery County Council.
Old scams never die.
We are very mindful.
Here's an update for Montgomery County.
CCM is your county information station.